Good evening. I'd like to call our third meeting of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two to order. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, people may participate in our public meeting via Zoom. The ID and passcode are available on the planning board agendas, which are found on the planning board page of the Town of Milton website. Citizens may always view us on cable access, live streaming, or at a later date on the cable access website. They have an archive. So we can begin by introducing our members and staff. So I'm Denny Swenson, Chair. Kathleen O'Donnell, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Taguas, member.
And Meredith.
Meredith Hall, member.
Okay, and Rich Beeler, our secretary, will be joining us in progress. So our next meeting dates are planned for Thursday, August twenty-sixth. That one we have agreed would be via Zoom. And Thursday, September ninth. I thought we could discuss on August twenty-sixth whether we wanted to have that live or via Zoom. I think we'll know, we'll have a better sense then for any town or state guidelines as the pandemic is sort of adjusting by day right now. Does that make sense to everyone? We'll just discuss what we're gonna do for September, the last meeting in August. Okay, I will hold the approval of minutes until our secretary, Rich, joins us. And Allison, did you want to do a staff update?
Sure. Great. So we have a couple of new and exciting things going on. A couple of weeks ago, the Select Board approved a request that we had put forward to enter an agreement with a local Cambridge female owned and operated franchise for outdoor street furniture named Soufa. They are panels that aren't very big, but they are installed in public ways. And we have a tour with them on Tuesday to see where these installations will occur. They, the panels are custom for each municipality. So we can restrict what we don't want on there. Things like advertisements for tobacco or cannabis or alcohol and the like. But we can also have some public facing information, like, you know, the school calendars or when Little League starts or when the library is having an event. And one of the other things that we would like to try and put on Soufa is my next topic. And Meredith was gracious enough to join us in a meeting. About a year and a half ago, almost two years ago now, we had started a project with Wentworth's History Department to start digitizing all of our cataloged historic inventory in Milton. And it was kind of twofold. It's great to get all of the inventory centralized in a pretty user-friendly way. But we also, where the Historic Commission's trying to create districts, it will help with that process and boundaries and have some public facing information and make things interesting. And we would like to also include the opportunity to have some of our historic structures public facing on the Soufa Street Furniture. So those are the two exciting updates I have for you this evening.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much. And I forgot to allow the staff to introduce themselves. So Allison.
I, I'm Allison Quinn. I am the Assistant Town Planner.
Excellent. And Julia.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
That is okay.
I can't quite tell, but do we have any citizens who are here tonight? Unfortunately, I'm on an iPad and I can't tell.
So we have John Cohane in attendance.
Oh, okay, great. Did anyone want to speak for citizens? Speak?
I don't see anyone out, out there.
Okay, all right. Well, if, if John would like to join us during one of the topics, just raise your hand and let us know. That'd be great. Thank you. All right, so new business. This is more of an update. We, we got a couple of proposals in for the forty B land area calculation. But what we wanted to do was allow Tim and Allison to work out a scope of work to begin the procurement process. And where they have these proposals, they have a lot of the information right in front of them. So more of an update. So they will be working on that in the next couple of weeks. They will come back to us with a scope of work. So, so our next topic under new business.
Any question on that?
Yes.
The funds that we approved to have allocated, were those the prior fiscal year or are they in this new fiscal year that we just started?
It's in the new fiscal year.
And do we have a sense of what the total amount of those fees might be?
So the, the initial vote was seven thousand five hundred. Then there was discussion about ten thousand. And so now we're gonna go back and look at the procurement process and look at what it is we think we want based on all of this new information that we have in front of us. And we're gonna, you know, the staff, Tim and Allison are going to suggest an amount based on what we are learning and come back to us with a suggested amount and the procurement process details.
So may I make a request? To provide us with an update on how much of last fiscal year's money we, so we left on the table, so to speak, that we didn't put to use, that will end up flowing to free cash? Just curious.
So Cheryl, I can help give you a little assistance with that. I had a conversation with Karen Preval, the new Director of Finance for the Town of Milton. She's not really new, but she's changed the, the way that we are reporting and how the mechanisms that we use to carry funding forward from year to year. She's informed me that we can still draw on prior year budget allocations. So I, I think there was just a little bit of confusion as how, how these things were gonna happen. There's capital planning processes and then there's just general budget that you guys voted on at town meeting that gets allocated. That money, although it was given back to free cash, is still available for our use. So we just need to create a purchase order and we can, we can draw off of it.
Do we have to go to warrant committee for permission to, for use of that cash?
I, I think if you've already voted on it, no. If it's something that you want to use funding for that hasn't already been allocated for something, then I think yes, you do.
Okay, so may I just ask if you would confirm that, Allison? It's just from my information, having served on the warrant committee before and understanding how it was done in, in the past. And if she has a new system, I, I'd just like to understand how it works, though.
Yep. I've also asked her for a copy of the, the state law that she's following so that we can all kind of understand it a little bit better. It's really confusing to someone like me who doesn't deal with local budgets the way that you guys do, so.
It's really confusing completely. I mean, I, as a former town council for like fifteen years, yeah, it's a unbelievably confusing process. So, but it is, it would be unusual, it seems to me, to go back to the warrant committee, but then Milton has kind of an unusual sort of setup anyway.
Indeed.
Yeah, so in the past, what it would be is like unspent funds go, go to free cash and then any expenditures have to go to the warrant committee. So and then normally for unforeseen expenditures. So in other words, something that hadn't been anticipated or planned before. So I'm, I'm just curious. And that's all. What needs to dwell on it?
Okay, I'm, well, just keeping it moving so Cheryl can get back to her vacation. We have East Milton Planning and Zoning. Now that the Barrett Consulting Group has completed their report, we can think about next steps in East Milton. So wanted to open that up to discussion. And here.
I have a little information that, that might be helpful. At the last planning board meeting where we were in person, Kathleen had suggested that I pair up where we were in our timeline for the work that was done in Milton Village. And I've done that. And what appears to have hap, had, had happened is that there was a public facing meeting where all of the information from the myriad of different consulting groups had completed studies and had data to share. There was a meeting that kind of allowed the public to come in and see all the findings and from almost, I, I think, a year after that, or not, not even quite a year, maybe six months, the draft of the Milton Village zoning was, was, you know, going back and forth for editing. So it seems like the next step might be where we have all of these reports, the ULI TAP report from, I think it was two thousand and eighteen. We have the traffic study. We have Judy Barrett's report. So there's been a lot of investment in studies and research to benefit East Milton Square. It seems like the, you know, I'm not sure if you guys want to have another, you know, town-sponsored public meeting or if Judy Barrett, you know, public where she presented all of the outcome of her project with the stakeholders of East Milton Square would suffice. So I guess that's kind of where we're at. Do you want to start drafting the zoning or do you want to have a final meeting?
I'd like to have a, a, a survey done.
Okay.
I don't think, I think I agree with you that we've already done, you know, all the sort of pre-work that we would have done, we did with Milton Village. That's already happened over here. But I'd like to get, you know, two precinct-wide survey. Because I, I don't, I think that people won't come to a public meeting. And you will, you'll get the same people that always come to public meetings. And then there are a lot of people here. You know, this is a close neighborhood. We're very close to each other. We see each other all the time. There's been a lot of anxiety over here. And I think it would be better to do a survey that people could just fill out.
What do you think, Kathleen, about, I know some communities have something like chat with the planner kind of opportunities. So like if, if the planning department had, let's say, an open house, if you will. No? You don't think so?
No, I talked, I mean, Arthur Doyle and I have spoken about this. There's, there's just a lot of heat over here and a lot of people who won't say anything in public because.
No, but I'm, I'm talking about like a person could like schedule a time to speak with him or Allison rather than fill out a survey.
Just do a survey.
You think you're gonna get everybody?
So we, I just want to recall that we did do a survey. I, I think it may have been before Allison, maybe Lauren Massier. Do you remember that, Cheryl?
I do.
I think we might be able to pull that up and then see what we learned from that survey.
But that's too long ago. There's too long, there's too many changes that have happened since that survey was done.
Okay, but we could also, I mean, it would be good for us to have that to see if anything's changed from that and to see what we did learn from that. And then you, you could ask, you could look at the questions. I don't recall the, the real detail of it, but we could, you know, I, 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 I was at the meeting with you, Kathleen, when Kathy Barrett explained, Judy Barrett explained that, you know, there's new people in East Milton. So we could, it's just another way to check the temperature. Like you said, it's hot over there. Check the temperature and and we have a study, I mean, a survey already. I, I have no objection to doing a survey. I'm just, we, we, we're gonna be presenting all of our materials. I think that's another one, another piece of the materials that would be good to have.
So I think if you look at the survey that was done before, maybe you could use the same questions or maybe add a question or two to it because it might be interesting to see how it's changed over time. Yeah, and the, the questions were developed by the planning department at the time. So that would have been Bill Clark and Lauren Massier, as you said, Denny. And then the, the planning board reviewed the questions and, you know, made suggestions about what to include or not include, et cetera. So it was actually, I thought, a good survey and it was good participation. I know Tim said that the bike and pedestrian master plan survey that went out has already had lots and lots of respondents.
Yeah, I responded to it. I mean, he said, and that's what gave me the idea to say, this is not, you know, this is not rocket science.
Well, it's just, I would like to make sure that a survey, you know, like a little bit of the demographic is filling it out, right? Because it's kind of important to, I think I've said before, it's, it's not just a residential district, like most parts of Milton, but it is also one of the few business districts and the largest one. And so it's important that the businesses be a part of this, any survey, you know? And I think they were in that prior survey. So maybe Allison, you can look through what data you have left from Lauren. And, and if you don't dig it up, let me know. I'm sure I have it somewhere.
Absolutely. I will, I'll look for it and, you know, I'll review it with Tim and I'll share it with you guys. I do, I've done a ton of research in my day. Surveys are a very, very easy lift for me. You know, there's multiple ways to generate them. You can target, you know, if it's elderly people, you know, to, to make sure they have it, whatever we can't do through Google Forms or Survey Monkey or whatever we decide to do, we can even do a mailer. So if the goal is to get everybody engaged, we'll make sure we do one for the business, too. And I will get that information from the previous survey to you beforehand.
And I just also want to mention that the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee members are interested in this work. The members have seen it as kind of the, a follow-up to Milton Village, which was seen as maybe, at the time anyway, an easier first district to work with. But the idea is that it's, the master plan itself, you know, recommends that these studies happen in our business districts, right? And that the further study happened and that mixed use overlays be considered, right? So that's why the committee said, well, these were major next steps recommended in the master plan. Because, you know, one of the things that's, that is, my understanding is, from the state level is adopting a master plan is like a step and then making your zoning consistent with your master plan is what's to follow, or at least one of the things to follow. Because it's not all zoning, of course. It's in a master plan. There's many of them. Traffic and open space, et cetera. But anyway, I just want to mention that because maybe there could be some assistance or some joint meeting or something like that. So I just want to pass that along as our representative. And I, I think, at the last meeting, I think we discussed committees. And I don't know if you appointed me back to master plan, but I got a letter from the Select Board. Actually, I need to go down and get sworn in for it, so.
Yeah, we discussed it, but we said we were going to discuss it again. I recall because you weren't here. But I think, I think we did, Kathleen gobbled up a bunch of committees that she's already on and and Meredith was nice enough to step up and do the capital, the capital campaign, or capital. I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your committee name. And then we, we thought you might like that Milton Master Plan Committee. Are we right or do you have an interest?
Yeah.
But is it your eighth year on that? Well, thank you for doing that. I'm sticking with my technology committee.
Very good.
One of the things I think we should also offer, if we're offering a survey, because I think in order to eliminate confusion, is that we have a map of the area, just because I sat in a lot of the Milton Hill, you know, the meetings that you had with Milton Hill. And it was really important to make sure that there's a clear definition of where the overlay would exist because people just don't know how it's gonna impact them. You know, East Milton in general, but just specifically where the boundaries would be drawn. So I think that's something that we need to determine where that business district would be. You know, identify what are historic structures within that building, what are nonhistoric structures within that footprint. But just sort of have a map that we can show people where, what we're talking about, which buildings would be affected. So they don't think it's their own houses that might be affected.
Yeah, one thing I think that was discussed in that working group and I know is, is something that I had noted before is that we have a lot of, a number of buildings that are business uses that are in residential district that's adjacent to the business district. And every time they go to make a change, they have to go to a variance process, you know, or, or some other cumbersome process. And they've been business for decades and it doesn't make sense, in my opinion, for them to not be in the business district. So that was something that we had asked Barrett, Judy Barrett's group to look at, and it isn't part of their report. So when we look at mapping, Meredith, I'd like to make sure people understand the distinction between, they, most people probably think, you know, they're like the building across from the post office that has the bank and other things. That's in the residential district. But that's been a business, that building's been there since about the fifties maybe or sixties or something, and it's been a business use.
When the expressway went through.
Yeah, and exactly. So, and there's others like that. I was really surprised when I looked at this years ago on the Master Plan Committee itself. But it was something that Tim's process or Bill had identified as something that really should be cleaned up because it does cause challenges, you know, for property owners and businesses and, and for residents, right? Because they don't, they don't necessarily understand all these nuances.
Right. So that's why I think we need to be really clear before we send a survey out and.
Well, I don't think, we don't know where those, what, right now, we don't know where the boundary lines would be.
Barrett has a recommendation, though, I think. Kathleen, we should take a look at it before we.
Yeah, we should agree on the visual.
Yeah.
I think we, as, as a board, should agree on a visual and maybe, maybe the, the buildings that are technically residential but are, are, are business use, it could be one color and then the other ones that are clearly defined could be another color and, or something to that effect so that the people doing the survey can understand.
I'm happy to work on a couple of drafts and, and circulate those out so that you guys have something to think about as we start collecting all the data from the previous survey.
Excellent. And then, thank you, Allison. Thank you. That's great. I think another thing that came out of the last meeting with Judy Barrett was that the, there are parking management issues and there are parking enforcement issues. And I think it would help our public discussion if there were any measures that can be taken, do get taken, because it it just makes it very hard for us to ask for new things when people feel like old agreements had been on or, you know, the, the parking issues surrounding the restaurants and then the enforcement issues surrounding the eighteen-wheelers or the large trucks that double park. And there's some, there's some things there that make it hard to start a fresh discussion.
But how do we have jurisdiction over that? I don't think we do.
I, I agree it's an issue. So maybe, I don't, I understand, Kathleen, we don't have jurisdiction, but maybe what we could do is have Allison speak to, I guess it would be a police department about the enforcement and maybe it's traffic commission about other things. Because it is something that I think, I agree with Denny, that it's hard for people to accept new planning initiatives when they feel like ongoing things haven't been addressed.
Well, I mean, over here, we're complaining constantly about, I mean, seriously, that mess in East Milton Square is, is arming.
Yeah.
And, and, and Rich has said any number of times about the fact that, you know, nobody's enforcing the trucks. Nobody's enforcing deliveries. Nobody's ticketing anybody. You can park in a two-hour parking space all day and never get a ticket. So, I mean, that's, but that's not a planning board. You know, we can say what we want to the Board of Selectmen and to the Select Board or to the Police Commissioner, but, you know, the Traffic Commission, it's up to them.
So maybe what we do is issue a memo that says that, you know, our view is that it, the lack of addressing this at that level is hampering our planning initiative and zoning initiative.
It's a good idea.
Fire and lights on fire. Because it is, it's been years that people bring up the same issues and I can appreciate the frustration, really.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, you know, we, one of the things in like trying to revitalize the area is you say, oh, you're gonna get good things out of development. And people say, well, you know, we've heard that before and look at what happened. So we don't, do you know, it just, it, it's a, it's a matter of trying to build the trust. So maybe maybe Allison and Tim and I could strategize. I could reach out to whoever they think is best. Or we could create some memos or I'll just work with Allison and Tim and we'll try to strategize a way to explain what we're trying to do in the next six months and what could help us. Does that sound like a good plan? Kathleen's smiling, so I hope she likes that.
Well, as a person who walks through East Milton Square with rosary beads in my hand going, oh, my God. You're like, really?
I, I do think that, that, that beta study did have several recommendations related to parking management and enforcement. So maybe if we tease those out, Jenny, we can kind of think about, you know, which ones should be a priority and, and how to get that implemented.
Okay. See, I knew you'd have a great idea, or many great ideas. So I look forward to working on that with you, Allison. Hopefully, we can bring something back to. Hopefully, we can bring something back to the planning board in the next couple of meetings. Um, okay, we are sailing right along here, um, old business. Um, fall and winter town meeting articles. So, um, one that we've talked about is accessory dwelling unit by law. Um, did you have any ideas or updates for us on that one, Kathleen?
Yes, I've been working on that, um, pretty extensively. I've looked at the model Cape Cod one that has been passed by 11 towns on the Cape. Um, this, uh, this past spring. Um, I've looked at a couple of other examples and um, I've taken ours, revised it a bit, and then I'll have that ready for the next meeting to um, include in the folder. The, uh, so it's, um, it would be designed so that it would be a majority vote, not a two-thirds. So an accessory dwelling unit in your house would be as a right. Uh, an accessory dwelling unit in the backyard would be by special permit. And that would satisfy the housing choices, um, legislation in terms of the quantum of vote.
So Kathleen, how would that work for something where, is, does a, uh, can you do an addition to your house? Is that considered within your house?
Yes.
Okay.
But with limitations on it. I mean, there's sort of design standards that are in place that, you know, you've got to be, it can't be, you know, much bigger than, it can't be, has a certain size limit. It has to have a subordinate entrance, um, or an entrance perhaps on the side so that the front of the house still looks like the front of a single-family house, not a two-family.
Yeah, I mean, just because so much of the housing stock, that's not, let's say, some of the larger homes, you know, doesn't have first floor bedroom. You know, it might only have one or one and a half baths, you know, there's very, uh, a lot of housing stock that was built around the 20s. You know, that would really, be really hard not to do an addition and get an ADU in it.
Right, yeah, I mean, in my house, you couldn't, you couldn't.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I've seen where you just kind of need, I'm sorry, Meredith, go ahead.
I just was going to ask, is there any way to do an AD, ADU unit, um, added without adding to be a conservative market rate, uh, residence?
Well, um, you asked, you, that you asked that question, um, I am counsel to the Lincoln, um, Affordable Housing Trust. And we have an accessory dwelling unit by law in Lincoln, that's an affordable accessory dwelling unit. Um, and what we, um, so we're ready to roll that out because we didn't, we passed it years ago, but we haven't used it because the incentive to a property owner was to get a tax abatement or tax adjustment. So if you were going to have an accessory dwelling unit with an affordable, an affordable tenant, you were going to get a break on your real estate taxes. We needed to get special legislation to be able to do that. And as you can imagine, going to the general court isn't the easiest thing in America. So it took a couple of years. So now we're ready to roll that project out. Um, and so we can, you know, but it's, it's complicated. You have to put a restriction on your property. Um, you have to agree to comply with fair housing, which would not be the normal circumstance if it's just a owner-occupied three and under. Um, so there's, you know, there were, there's requirements with it. We don't, we don't know how many people in Lincoln, I guess, to um, to uh, avail themselves of this project, but we have been, there are at least three or four people that have been already talking to the town about signing up for it.
So it just seems like if, if there's an opportunity for us to get some additional affordable housing units and, you know.
But Meredith is only going to get, seriously, if you got one. And, and to, seriously, and, and all the studies on accessory dwelling units in all the towns in greater Boston, it's been like seven at the most a year. And so one of those gets to be affordable, I mean, that's not going anyplace towards raising, you're getting, you're anywhere on your SHI. I mean, that's just, you know, this, it's, it's sweet, but it's not going to make a substantive difference.
I, I just think any affordable housing.
A hundred, a accessory dwelling units in a, in a year in this town, they are expensive. And, and they're not, you know, you're not rolling and saying, oh yeah, I'm going to drop $150,000 on something like this. Um, you know.
Rent is lucrative also, so it's, it's, there's that incentive, because it is, it's to be able to rent out a small room, a small apartment. It rents are just really astronomical right now, and there is a demand for it, so it's driving.
So are people's taxes, so, you know, yeah, I, I absolutely hear you on that.
Yeah.
As I said, I think it, to do it, it's, it's complicated, we have to get it approved by DHCD. It's not something that you can say, oh yeah, I'm just going to roll over and do this in 15 minutes. It's seriously, it's taken Lincoln five years.
Yeah.
To get it organized.
Yeah.
I can let you know by January.
I was going to say, you know the pathway, so you could guide us, so it.
But I said, it, it was five years.
Yeah. I mean, I do have to think about the math, I think we talked about it before, construction costs are really high.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, $350 a square foot, you know, for something, for an ADU, I think is not. Um, in fact, it's probably more like $400 a square foot. So I don't know, if you, you think about what you're, if you're going to build 1,000 square feet and that's $400,000 to build it, you know, um, you have to be able to have, some of it, we're trying to look at, well, being able to assist people who might be otherwise, um, you know, cash poor and, and have a, a big asset in their house, but, you know, um, $400,000 for an ADU when you look at the price of a single family. I, I mean, it's just the economics of them right now, I think are pretty challenging too, so to Kathleen's point, I think you're only going to get a handful. Although I like the idea, but just until construction costs come down, I think it's going to be challenging.
Yeah, but I'll be retired on a sailboat sailing across the Atlantic in five years by the time they get disorganized. But I, I can, I can outline that process for you.
Thank you, that's good. Um, per, perhaps we could set a limit of, you know, a limit of how many units per year to help us make sure it doesn't go, um, you know, could get out of control. Um, so we'll, we'll look forward to seeing your new language. Um, all right, and then, um, the next, uh, thing we've been talking about for winter town meeting articles would be the earth removal and deposit fill bylaw. And um, we'll save the tree discussion for later, but um, Cheryl, did you want to talk a little bit about, uh, the goals for that bylaw?
Well, at our last, um, working group meeting, um, Tim spoke about the possibility of considering a, a separate section for tree, as I think Denny, um, just alluded to there. Uh, which there's, uh, some model bylaws at the state level and other communities have. Um, but the, uh, on the, on the cut and fill itself, um, it's sort of clarifying through Joe Prandak, you know, um, the kinds of issues that he's encountered, combining them with the kinds of issues that we've heard that the ZBA encounters and that the planning board encounters. So that there's kind of a one place that applicants, even though they're going to have ju, different jurisdictional bodies who are reviewing it, they all are going to the same place to look for the requirements, um, for cut and fill. And so what we're talking about is, um, uh, having a better definition of the purpose of the bylaw and then having, uh, it be pretty clear when it gets triggered. Um, and some of that triggering, uh, is some, adding some provisions uh, that we don't have currently, including like if you're going to build within your side yard setback, for example, that with a certain amount, with, um, you know, moving a certain amount of earth, whether it's cutting or filling, that that would trigger review. Um, because the impacts could be to your neighbors. So it's really trying to get at the issues, some of the issues that we've seen on the planning board, which is extensive regrading, uh, for subdivisions particularly. And then the, um, the use of retaining walls that results, and we've seen these on the large 4D projects as well. And what it, this signals to me is an overdevelopment of a piece of property. Um, so, you know, we have other things that are determinants, like setbacks and height and so forth. But we don't have anything that really deals with the piece of land, you know, the land itself. And so this would really just try and get some parameters in place that are more clearly understood than what is currently there, and then making it clear why we're doing it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I thought that, um, I looked at Maggie Oldfield's emails because I walked into the meeting late when she had been winding up. And, and I, I thought she had a good point about the fact that the regulation of a nursery shouldn't be under that bylaw to begin with.
Yeah, Joe Prandak had some reasons for that, and we've talked about that, and Tim and he are going to work on that a little bit more. So, but you know, what we thought is, we have, you know, addressing Joe's concerns, maybe we have some cross-referencing so that it becomes, um, you know, if you're looking one place, uh, that, uh, it's clear that if you're looking in the cut and fill, that, that, that doesn't apply to that landscape business and you.
Wouldn't you have the amendment go into the zo, the nursery bylaw to say that the cut and fill doesn't apply?
Yeah, something like that.
A more logical place.
Yeah.
Running a nursery, you're going to really lead, read that bylaw, and you just know, you don't have to worry about this other one.
Yeah, that might be, right, the best solution there, yes.
That, and that's, having read, I mean, read them, I thought, and, and her comment, I thought that made some sense.
Okay, we'll take that back to Tim and Joe, right, Denny?
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, this is, uh, one of those discussions that's to be continued, to be continued, to be continued. It's a lot of talking.
Well, there's some of them. Yeah, I think what we want to do is test some things, because I did a visual of what the trigger is on the amount of earth removal, and it's, you see the, the visual of, you see a number, it's one thing, but when you see a picture of what that number represents, it's a whole nother thing, right, Denny?
Oh, yeah, I know, it was really good when you did that, because it, you know, it's really hard to picture how much earth material is one yard, never mind 100 yards, and what that actually means on a property. And so Cheryl brought a lot of her tools in to help us, um, figure out how to do that. I was thinking about this, Cheryl, when I was walking on Pulte, uh, the Pulte development, if you notice, they regraded everything, right? But then, it was interesting, they had so much rock there, you might remember from our sidewalks. And what they kind of did was they kind of crushed the rock almost into piles, but really flattened it down and put the houses on top. So if you are looking at the houses from the backyard, there is like a slope that goes right down. And, and so the houses are on these piles, and it's just not ideal. It's really, really hard on the environment when you do it that way. Um, so.
Well, and the other thing is, you know, is that, with that, Denny, is like, if you, if we look at our definitions of how we measure height, and, you know, based on existing grade versus proposed grade, it's not consistent everywhere, and it makes a big difference. Like, uh, when, all right, I was just going to say something about the new application for cantina, but I guess I can't, but there's, um, uh, but when you're bringing earth in, uh, uh, on a property, and then you're measuring the height from that earth, you know, if you're bringing seven feet in or eight feet in or something, your, your height, and you're not supposed to be measuring it from that new height and, uh, in some places in our bylaw, but not every place in our bylaw, right, Kathleen?
It's like standing on a box. Like an extra four inches of height.
I mean, it's crazy. And, uh, it makes a huge difference. And the other, the other thing I want to point out, um, just before I forget it, is that our, uh, the trigger in our current, um, bylaw is not scaled to property size. So it would apply to a 5,000 square foot property as, or, or a two-acre property or 10-acre property, the same percentage. I mean, the same trigger. So now we're going to scale it to the property. Um, so, um, but I, the, the reason it's taking longer is, I think, first, we identified some of the things we wanted to make sure it addresses, but making sure that you, you have the parameters to do what you want to do is another thing, right?
Yeah, trying to try out different formulas and, 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 and suss them out and, and try to troubleshoot, like what could go wrong here, or what could go wrong there, wh, where do we want to steer this? So it's, it's quite an exercise that Cheryl and I and Tim and Joe Prandak are on and so, it's a, it's, it's a complicated, um, we have a lot of complicated goals that we're working on. So we'll keep at it. Um, all right, if we want to move on to the next topic, um, the Milton Village overlay, I'm not sure Allison wants to give us the update, perhaps Cheryl could help, I'm not sure. Um, is this about the?
Yeah, my understanding is there was, um, uh, a decision that came from the Attorney General's Office in reviewing the zoning that we're going to have to make a correction about the, um, where the funds for the bonuses go.
Oh, yeah.
More into a general fund and with a specific purpose, that's my understanding. I was on a call with, um, Kevin Freitag and Tim, someone speak about that. I, I think it was a couple of months ago. Is that right, Allison, did I get that right?
Yes, I, I think we, we, whatever the language that we included in the bylaw, we have to clean it up so that it's consistent with what we, what we can do. Um, I, I don't think it's a, I, I don't necessarily think it's a, that, you know, a, a big deal, it's just we, we got to figure out what it is that we're going to be putting the money into, and then how it's going to be consistent with, like, is it going to be a revolving fund? Is it going to be district improvements? We, we have to figure that piece out.
My understanding is it can't be a revolving fund, but it can be, uh, it can be targeted use. So I don't know if this sounds anything familiar to you, Kathleen, but the zoning itself and the idea that you can collect the monies for the bonuses was all approved.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, it's a finance, it's a finance question about how to put it into the right, um, you know, that's a different section of the, of the statutes about how to create special funds, so that's probably where we.
Special fund versus revolving fund, it, I mean, it's, it, I, I think you're right, it's an accounting, um, change or accounting, um, justification that we need to do, that will, will likely, I haven't seen any revised language. I think Kevin was going to look in.
Yeah, but we may have to do an amendment to the bylaw to reflect the proper language.
Right.
So that we would aim for, for winter, right, for our winter town meeting? So we want that on our list.
I don't have anybody, you know, jumping into the project, into doing a project there yet, so we've got.
I understand there's good interest though, so that's a good sign.
Mm-hmm.
So, all right, uh, okay, so we will keep that on our list. And, um, we, we're hoping for language to come back from Kevin Freitag. Okay, all right, um, okay, so rules and regulations.
Sorry, Denny, may I?
Yep, yes, please.
On the winter, uh, was there, um, I don't have the agenda open in front of me, but I think, um, the memory care assisted living, is that zoning targeted for winter as well?
As of now, it is, um, because they decided they didn't want fall, so I, we pushed it back to the winter. Um, I, I understand that they're going to come back in September, and I think they, I think they're tweaking things. Um, so we'll hear from them in September, so we'll keep a place on our list for them for winter.
So I, um, Kathleen, I think I may have, um, seen in the minutes that you were thinking about the bylaw needed to be less site-specific. Is that, is that something, um, that you were going to look at as well in addition to the?
I did a draft.
Okay.
And I sent it to you.
Me?
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it, all right, I'm going to look uh, between my travels, I missed it, okay, sorry, I will look for it.
Um, but yes, the, the philosophy that I have, um, Meredith and Denny, is different than what we've done in the past, which is we do zoning that's so site-specific and project-specific that it can only be used for one thing. And then that one thing doesn't happen, and we have a piece of zoning that sits on the books that nobody ever uses. So I thought it maybe make more sense to draft a bylaw for assisted, you know, living that could be used in any neighborhood. Um, not that anybody is, but that it would be more broadly based. Um, and, um, you know, would have, you know, design standards that would be adopted for that particular project that doesn't get included in the zoning. Um, you know, we'd have rules and regulations for the planning board that, you know, you would have to comply with, and we would put language in those rules and regulations as part of an update of our planning board regulations. So I, I drafted a sort of more generic, um, you know, by, bylaw, that doesn't, you know, Ned's draft was, you know, really only for Highland Street, period. That's the only, and, and probably only in that place in Highland Street. That's the only, and and probably only in that place in Highland Street, and not further out Highland Street, or in on any other, on any other street. So, um, so as I said, that's, so I, I've done that, and, um, and I've talked to Doug Henry about it, who represents the Abutter, and, um, and I've talked to Ned, and, um.
We did talk about that, but I forgot.
I'm kinda waiting to hear back.
Mr. Henry?
Yeah.
No, 'cause I think he was working on something with Ned. I, my concern is that we're gonna end up with two.
He was, he was. And so, so I sort of entered that conversation to say, okay.
Let's have one draft.
Yeah, 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 no, no, we're not having 18 drafts.
And they're doing a draft, and Ned's doing a draft, but I think the difference is.
No, I think everybody's looking at mine now.
Okay, okay, so I, I, um, so it's, it's an interesting situation, because as of, right now, it's a citizen petition, and now.
Well, I think, um, there, the, the, uh, my recollection is that they wanted, even though that, uh, it was presented to us, it's always been their hope and intent that the planning board would sponsor an article, not be a citizen's petition. And, um, whether, you know, the board decided to do that or not, I think we hadn't taken a position, but I think we did talk about it would be preferable, because we have more control over what, what is included in the language. And I think what we found with, um, with Winter Valley, that amendment, is that, um, we have less control, right? It was like, what did the sponsors of the petition think? You know, like, we could only make suggestions. So.
Right, right.
I think it makes sense to me, um, if we can come to an agreement that it's the right zoning, that it be planning board sponsored, I think. And one of the things, like, in reading the minutes, you know, like, even the minutes intertwined zoning with a project. And I, I, it's one of the things I wanna come back to make a suggested amendment to the minutes, is because, um, you know, we're not approving a project when they're talking about that. Even though there is showing us a project, we're not approving a project, because there's no application before us. They're showing us something as, um, as a way to explain what they'd like to do, and they need the zoning to do it. But zoning is, is not, um, is not the same thing. Writing zoning, it's not the same thing as approving a project, as we know. So like, if we think about Willcut Woods, the, there, it went kind of through that same methodology, where there was a project, and then there was zoning written around the project, and then there wasn't an application under special, for a special permit. But it's not, um, it's not the most common way to do zoning, I think, is what, um, has become a problem, because when you wrote, when the town wrote zoning for assisted living for a particular site in a different area, and that didn't materialize, then that zoning becomes obsolete, because it can't be used somewhere else. And so we have all these sections now that are in appendix to our zoning code for every site-specific zoning article that exists, right? And if you look at other towns' zoning codes, they don't have that. So.
All right. Um, I, I just think we, as a board, have to decide if, um, if we want to make it a, um, a, a planning board article or not, and and we, I'm sorry, my electricity keeps going out, but my generator should come on any minute, if you can still see me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, as long as you can hear me, I'll keep going. I hope my power comes on. But anyway, so, um, we, we have to decide that, and I wasn't ready to decide that. I wanted to give Ned the opportunity to come back to us in September, uh, what Ned would like to do, um, I, and also.
I wasn't, we weren't making any decisions. It's not on the agenda anyway.
No, I, I know, but I do have concerns that, um, it is a citizen petition, and we shouldn't really be helping the applicant with, uh, drafts. It's a citizen's application, and it's, or, or, uh, petition. It's sort of, we, I just think we have to be a little bit more careful about that. Um, and and we, we, um, we need to decide things as a board, um, first. Um, so, let's, let's hear back from Ned. I think he was working on a lot of things.
Cause I wanna be clear.
To where he is.
I just wanna be clear, Denny, too, that, um, I, um, to date, in reviewing what they've been, what has been presented, I think we can craft zoning. I would not, in no way be ready to approve a project in the current design state that it is. So I just keep making distinction between the zoning, which I think can be done, and a, and a particular design, which I don't think is anywhere close to what it should be, or could be for that parcel, okay? And I just wanna make sure everybody who keeps listening and hearing, and us as a board can make that distinction between the two. Because it's been muddled other times, and I think it's, it's better for us to think of the distinction.
And I think in general, that we should have a zoning bylaw that for assisted living. We don't. We, we have.
So we, we have one that, we have one that Ned was working from, from Randolph Avenue, so.
Right, but it's only Randolph Avenue is the only place that could ever be used. Why wouldn't we?
Which he was wanting.
That applies any number of places.
Um, I, I don't know that we're gonna have that many memory clinics in Milton.
It's not.
I would love it if we did. I would, I would love it if we did, but I don't know, I, I don't know that we have that much space in Milton. I, I don't know if I agree with this approach. I have a citizen petition in front of us, and it's being worked on, and I just think we shouldn't be working on drafts of a citizen petition. We should be waiting until we decide as a planning board whether or not we would like to make it ours. And at that point, we would be working on, um, drafts and so forth. Um.
One thing that I would say, Denny, is that, you know, we can help inform the draft that you view as a citizen's petition now, um, while we have time to, before it's actually filed. But I think it's better, I mean, that having a dialogue, I don't think is a bad thing, in whether.
No, I think a dialogue is good. I just think that, I think it's a, I was, it's a little, it's a little bit of an awkward position to be drafting something that you're then going to vote on. So when it's in the citizen petition stage, I don't think we should be doing drafts, because then you would be voting on.
Well, one thing is, like, I gave a lot of feedback on the draft that we were given, right, to help make it better. So when I say discuss, that's the kind of same kind of thing that Catherine having done. It's like, you know, I'd rather do that than wait for something and then have to redo it completely by the time, you know, you're trying to get it, once it's submitted, let's say it is submitted as a citizen's petition. If it's a wholesale rewrite, then it's not really the citizen's petition anymore. So, you know, I think, um, I understand what you're saying, but I, I do think it's worth taking the time to see if we can help craft something. And in the end, if we don't, if we feel like we're not, you know, we can't come to the same places that they want to be, then, you know, let them file what they think they wanna file. But if we can come to something that we think is good zoning, and let's just say, they don't think it can work for them, but it could work for a different operator, either on this site or a different site, then that would actually be beneficial, right? See, our problem is when you have the zoning, um, only for a site for a operator, it's their model that you're, you're zoning for. But there are other models, right? There are other people who operate assisted living and memory care and other things, um, that may not be exactly the model of the company that's, you know, Ned's working with. So i- it's just a distinction between, you know, something that's designed around a very particular, um, I keep saying model, because it's a built, it's a, a, kind of a business prototype model, right? They have a, a way, it has these pods, and they have three of them, and they have a certain number of people, but not, that's not the only way people can do this work, right?
Right, right, yeah, that was one of the things that I was thinking about. Like, if you look at the building, it probably works great in Needham, because you have these five, almost like a hand, these five offshoots going out, but when you're on the site, it would be good, instead of five, maybe three, and have them positioned in a different way, and da, 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 da. So it's, I'm learning a lot about memory care right now, um, which I think is a very important product, and I, I would love to see memory care in Milton. Um, lots, lots to work on and think about, so. All right, so onward if we're ready to the next topics.
Um, you, you envision that to be on the agenda in September, Denny, is that right?
Yes, Ned had asked to come back and speak, I believe, like, our first meeting in September. That and 4:40 Granite Ave, I think that's the standing request. Um, they were both hoping we would be live and in person, and just can't tell right now, so we'll see. I, I would love to be live and in person, too, but we'll, we'll have to keep our eyes on the news, um, and and decide at the end of August. Um, okay, so we have, um, tree protections, so we have that tree protection regulation language. Um, Kathleen, you had sent a note, um, to me that I thought we could talk about, um, at our meeting. Um, we're just, um, we, just to refresh our memories, we're just talking about a couple of sentences, um, just to tie.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, okay, so you're fine with that, with that tree language?
Yeah.
Okay, and and that's, Cheryl, you weren't at the last meeting, so I don't know if you recall, but we were just kind of feeling like, let's get that into the fall town meeting, because the Winter Town meeting looks kind of jam-packed right now. And we wanted to finalize that tree language. Um, did you have any thoughts on that?
Um, well, um, yeah, I was kind of, um, you know, Tim had sent some emails about that, and, uh, where he said we would be three consecutive town meetings doing revisions to the same bylaw. Um, so where we would potentially have a more comprehensive change to the cut and fill, which not only addresses the tree, but the larger issues for January, that, um, you know, we were asked before about, um, whether we should do something, you know, and we all agreed that we wanted to move forward with the changes that we did make. But now, where we're so close between, um, you know, a fall and a January, um, I guess, you know, I, where Tim had suggested, he thought it would be better to do them all at once. That was my feeling as well, but, you know, if you all feel more strongly, um, I, I feel, Denny, like we're getting, that we're making good progress on it, and if we can explain it all, you know, together at once, it might be beneficial.
I, I, I hear you, and I, I, our, our goals are to get it all done in the winter. If for any reason we couldn't get it all done in the winter, we, we don't have that strong tree protection language in there, you know what I mean? It's like this low-hanging piece of fruit, we could grab it now, or we could set it aside and wait and do it in the winter, and hopefully in the winter we do get there. But if we don't get there in the winter, then we're, we're looking at, like, May.
I think it's addressing the retaining wall trigger, though, right?
Okay.
And maybe the retaining wall piece by itself is a little isolated without the rest of it in some ways. You know, like, what we did do already, I thought was, like, very clear tree piece. The retaining wall was really the i- idea, I think I suggested before, before we really got into the larger discussion about the cut and fill, and, you know, this change in topography, and I'm, I'm feeling as if it might, that might feel a little isolated, you know?
Okay, all right, well, I, I'm, I'm willing to, um, save it, it's one little piece, dying to finish, but I also think if it helps us get the, if it helps motivate us to get the cut and fill bylaw in shape and in order, um, it will be a stronger presentation for winter to have it all come together.
I think it'll be easier for town meeting if it's a global kind of thing, rather than two lines here and two lines there.
And the Warren Committee did give us feedback, like, why are you doing, why are you doing this piecemeal? So I think, I think I don't wanna have that discussion again, 'cause I kind of understand why they, but, okay, all right, so, Meredith, did you have any?
No, you know, after I heard Tim's comments, I sort of felt the same. I think we should try to do it all together. It just, it makes sense, and I think it is easier for town meeting to digest why we're doing this, and it makes sense.
I agree. I think we should make it as easy as we can for town meeting members to be able to go home early. That's what I always wanted. Okay, it, no, and also just, um, read, you know, sometimes there are just so many things on the agenda for town meeting, that it seems like, seems like way too many. Um, so if we can consolidate it, I think it will probably be fine. So, all right. Well, that's good. Um, and then, um, do we have enough energy to go through any rules and regulations? Um, so from time to time, I know Cheryl and Kathleen bring up, oh, we gotta redo, we, we gotta update these rules and regulations. I went through them, and I'm fine. But I'm happy to listen to, um, to you guys on any rules and regulations you feel like would be low-hanging fruit. Um, because what we're looking to do is, we have already voted our tree, uh, our, our tree updates to the rules and regulations, but we needed to have it publicly posted. And so it's really just a technicality, so we have to have a public hearing to do that and to have our vote at that time. Um, so while we're doing that public hearing, um, and updating those tree regulations formally, um, we thought we'd take another peek at the rules and regulations and see if there are any that, you know, we would probably all agree on, that we could just, um.
So, Denny, you know, if we, um, if you don't mind, I'd like a little time to look through everything on that.
Sure.
Bring it up again, uh, at the next meeting or one following. Because, um, some things that come to mind for me are the waivers that we've granted oftentimes. And, you know, some of that has to do with sidewalks on both sides of the road, some of it's the right-of-way. And the right-of-way impacts, um, you know, impervious area, it impacts, um, regrading, et cetera. And so, in the, um, I, I'd like some opportunity to, to think about those a little bit. There's, um, I know in the past, when I've looked at this, some communities have different, uh, right-of-way widths for different categories of roadways. So, and the category of roadway, like, you know, we have it, if you, you have a street that has two homes on it, and it's a cul-de-sac, you have the same requirement as if it's something that's, you know, a, a, a much different kind of road. And so, um, that's the kind of, that's not a low-hanging fruit kind of change, and it probably requires a town engineer to weigh in. But, you know, as you know, from the working group on the cut and fill, um, I've, um, while we had the town engineer participate in some of the meetings, and though I advocated for low-impact design. Um, so, um, I think that would go hand in hand with kind of narrowing the roadways, because of the impervious area, stormwater, and all ties together. And so I think maybe we could have another, um, maybe it's the same working group, or slightly different working group, to kind of think about the rules and regs from that bigger perspective, um, that being separate from the, the low-hanging fruit things.
I asked the town clerk when I was getting sworn in, whether we had the rules and regulations in Word, so they could be editable text. And of course, we don't. Um, and they're dated 2014, which is some time ago. So I asked, um, the staff, and so they scanned it in to make it editable text, Word text, and sent it to me. Um, because I think, going to Cheryl's point, is that we, we give waivers of all these things that we probably ought to just have in the rules and regs. And the other situation, I think, is that not, the rules and regs, I mean, the one we did change was the requirement to provide plans on linen. was the requirement to provide plans on linen, um, which, you know, was really kind of cute, but, um, not possible these days. And so I think that we really, I'd like to take a look at the whole thing. And I'd also like to be able to put into those rules and regs some, uh, you know, sort of this, things that reflect new energy standards and climate change and, and, you know, heat islands and those kinds of things that we never thought about, you know, 10 or 15 years ago when they, these were last drafted. And who knows how long it's been since they did a global look at the rules and regs. And so if you're always trying to draft, you always put into your zoning all these design standards, um, then it's in your zoning and you can't change it if something happens. So lots of times it seems to me, those kinds of things that we put into the zoning should be in the rules and regs so that they can change, change as circumstances change. I mean, we get, you know, the polar ice cap melts and suddenly we have a lot more water. Um, you know, we, we would be wanting to address that in our rules and regs, which we can change with a public hearing. But if it's in our zoning, we have to have a whole meeting of the town and have a, have a vote. So it seems to me that if you have, Lauren did this list of all the waivers that we typically grant. Well, why wouldn't we just have that in the rules and regs, change the rules and regs so that it reflects what we always give people a waiver for?
Well, I think it's so far- So for instance, um, you know, um, I think one of them was that there were two houses going into a small subdivision. And, uh, one of the waivers we gave was that it didn't have to be 30 mile per hour compliant because it was just a little bitty street. So it didn't have to be, have the bells and whistles that you need when you have cars going 30 miles per hour because you're not going to have cars. So we gave it a waiver. But, so I, so we have a solution in there, but we don't, we don't necessarily want to give that away for all subdivisions. We obviously want to, want to be able to say, well, we can waive that here because it makes sense. But I don't know that we need to rewrite the rules and regs because, on that one, because, you know, we gave a waiver, you know, four years ago.
No, 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 but, I'm not telling you. You know, I'm going to say, right now, if we have, if we have a bylaw, we have a rules and reg that says you have to have granite bounds or something like that.
Granite what?
You know, lots of times we waive that.
Right. So, I mean-
Change the rules and regs to reflect that.
Well, one thing I would say is when the public is attending our hearings about projects and they hear the list of waivers, they use it as a measure of how inappropriate the project may be instead of, um, hearing the list of waivers as something that the planning board uses some discretion in. So I think it's, that's one of the reasons why we asked Lauren to do the list, like, what have we, and so I think that's in our folder, um, that was she generated. Um, and that we could add to it. But, um, you know, some things like the granite curbing, the thickness of pavement, some of it's truly engineering and the engineering department, DPW needs to weigh in. Um, but other things like even application materials, like, you know, um, I, I think we end up adding, asking for more information during the, um, hearings because it's not absolutely spelled out in our rules and regs what they need to submit. And so I think where we can provide, uh, better direction to applicants, it's better for us, it's better for the applicants and it's better for the neighbors because it sets our expectations a little bit better. And so, you know, you've been on the board long enough too, Denny, to have people feel very frustrated about the list of waivers. And some of them, it's like, well, we grant them on everyone. And so it's like-
No, we do. I mean, we give them away like candy. I mean, I've been astounded at some of them. Like, I don't even know why we have them sometimes. But I will say this. In some neighborhoods, granite makes sense. In some neighborhoods where they already have a lot of granite, it makes sense. If a subdivision is going to go in, it's going to be, it's going to fit with that neighborhood. In other neighborhoods, it doesn't, it's not necessarily needed, you know, so I think-
The one thing, I'm sorry, on the, on the, on that curbing is that the engineering department now requires curbing because they want the stormwater to flow to the drains. So what was done on other kinds of roads isn't allowed anymore. You know, so what people might think of as more country looking or more rural looking. So then the question is what does, nothing is as durable as granite. So if you have a, a snowplow coming by and it's knocking those asphalt, you know, Cape Cod berms, they call them. I don't see them here on Cape Cod, but anyway.
I know. No, but they do get beat up by the snowplows. They just, they, they're gone in a few years. And, and, but I know it, it's, it seems more country, but the country road kind of look. Um, but they, they, so in other words, if you have the developer put it in, is it saving our DPW money later when the DPW or our tax dollars have to replace the Cape Cod berm style, um, curves, you know? So these are all discussions. So anyway, I think you should, I think you should look through, I, it's in the share folder. The, um, Lauren did do an exhaustive, um, chart, um, that goes through all of the rules and regulations and, and where they were waived and, uh, uh, it was, it was an interesting exercise to go through and she clearly worked very hard on it. So, um, why don't we put this on our next agenda? Um, and, and see, see what we, where we want to take it. If we think there's a whole bunch that they, that we want to hear back from engineering, we will hear back from engineering. Um, but I think maybe if, I, I ideally, I would love to set up that public hearing, um, like a month from now or let's say the end of September. So sometimes it helps to have a deadline, but I really want to get that, those tree rules and regulations done, done. Um, so that we, we can feel good about that. Um, and-
Maybe we have a two tiered, Denny. We have one that's for the, whatever anybody else considers low hanging fruit. And then we have another one that's later.
Right.
Where we're going to take more input.
Right. Uh, you know, it, it might be some of them, I thought, you know, you might want, uh, feedback from the fire department or, you know, there was one about pipes and materials for pipes and things. So that's an engineer-
You already did that change.
Oh, you did that? Okay. Okay. That's right. Okay. So I don't know. So-
And we did the one on the fire alarms because of the system that they require in our plan, our rules and regs doesn't, doesn't-
Are those, are, are those, uh, changes, um, in a document that's readily downloadable on the town website?
Of course not.
No.
It's, it's, it's in the shared folder though. You will see-
No, no, no. But if you're a developer and you go to our website and you say, oh, let me look at the rules and regs for our planning board. Have they been updated? And the answer is, no, they haven't.
No. You're right. I hear you. No frustration in that voice.
I can go online to Maynard and look, you can download all of our stuff. It's right here. Their forms, the fee chart, all that stuff. It's right on their website. What do we have on ours? Old stuff.
It's true. Okay. All right. So I'm glad we finally had this discussion about rules and regulations. And where it's August, next, next meeting, this is a perfect time to have our final discussion on rules and regulations before a public hearing. And then maybe we'll do a second tier of this after. Does that sound like?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I can't believe this, but I feel like we're almost ready to go unless there's anything else.
Well, Rich is here.
Oh, Rich joined us. Oh my goodness.
Oh, I just was, yeah.
Oh, Rich, welcome aboard. We can, we can approve the minutes if you're here.
Yes. Um.
So, um, so I'm sorry, Danny and Rich.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't get, I read the minutes. I, obviously I have to abstain from the last meeting since I wasn't there. But the one prior to that, I did read them and I did want to make some distinction, like I mentioned earlier, about zoning versus project in the discussion about the memory care. So I, I didn't get a chance to do that. So I, can we defer those? And I can make some suggested changes for the next meeting.
Sure.
Sure. So do we want to approve July 20th as amended or?
I just have one, um, it says that our next meeting is, um, was, the, the next two meetings, one was going to be, um, on the 28th of August was our next meeting in Julia's minutes. It's actually the 26th.
Oh, okay.
Just a little small thing.
Okay. So we can, Julia, we can add that amendment, right? 26th.
I just, 28th.
Okay. Got it. Great. Thank you. Okay. Like anything, anything else? Kathleen, are you good with the meetings for the 20th?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion, Rich.
Cool. So move to approve the July 20th as amended.
Second.
All in favor? I, Denny, yes. Meredith, Paul?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
I am abstaining.
Oh, right. Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Ta-da. Okay. All right. Well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Okay. All in favor? Cheryl, yes. Meredith, Paul?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Denny, yes. Good night, everybody. And I just learned my, my generator works, everyone. I waited nine months through the pandemic to get a generator and it came on.
Fantastic.
Lucky. Okay. Good night, everybody. In two weeks. Thank you.
Good night.